Welcome to the October 12, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. If we can have roll call, Shannon, please.
Messina.
Here.
Fleming.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Luttrell. Mandell.
Yes.
McCracken.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Okay. If we can all stand and join me for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and freedom of speech.
Thank you. Can everybody here back there? Can you hear me? A little bit higher? Okay. If for some reason the volume changes, you can't hear, please let us know. We need approval of September thirteenth minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
First and second, wrong favor.
Aye.
Aye. At this time, it'll be public comment, and that's anything that isn't on the agenda that someone wants to speak about. Okay. Staff comments.
All right. Well, good afternoon, planning commissioners. So last week, we had our planning conference, the Idaho Chapter of the American Planning Association. We had it in Garden City and City of Coeur d'Alene and our partners at CDA 2030 and our consultants at MIG won an award. We won the Outstanding Plan Award, which is very exciting for our efforts on the comprehensive plan. So the award honors a written plan that advances a science and art of planning or brings awareness of the benefits of good planning. The award seeks to recognize excellence in planning for livable and sustainable communities with public engagement and realistic goals. Eligible nominations encompass plans of many types, including but not limited to comprehensive, strategic, transportation, energy, environment, economic development, urban design, tourism, rural, cultural, historic, neighborhood, and/or tribal. There are six award categories, and there were 15 nominations. So, very exciting. And we have a cool award trophy kind of thing that we'll share at future meetings. So, have that. Also, there is a tour next week of the Atlas Mill or the Atlas Waterfront Project through the Urban Land Institute Idaho, and I know a few of you will be joining, as well as Sean and myself. For our November meeting, we have four scheduled hearings, and two of those are two parts. So, that's all we have.
Question, where do we meet for that tour?
I will let you know. I'm not sure if we're meeting out Atlas or somewhere else.
Okay, thanks.
Jeff, did you hear the comments that they're not hearing us? Okay.
I'm opening up all I can.
Okay. We'll just project into the microphones.
Can you hear us? Okay. Was more of us when Hillary was speaking? Okay. We'll try. Any commissioner comments at this point before we get into our public hearing? Oh, sorry.
I just want to disclose that I am a resident of the Indian Meadows neighborhood, but I'm not financially benefiting at all from any of this proposed annexation.
Okay, great. Please check that. Okay, at this time, we're going to go into our public hearing, and let me explain how the process works, if you don't know. Sean from the city is going to give us a overview of the project, and then, at that point, we'll have the applicant come up and give his viewpoint of the project. And then, anyone that's signed up on the sheet back there who wishes to speak, please indicate if they do wish to speak, or if they don't wish to speak. I'll call your name, and then you'll have three minutes to speak. And there's a, more or less, a countdown clock. Once you get to that 30-second mark, please start wrapping up your comments, so I can move on to the next person, since there's a number of people here that are going to speak. That's about it. Sean, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So, before we get started, I put together this slide. I know when something comes up that is this large in nature, sometimes this is a public's first time at a hearing, and so I wanted to make sure everyone understood what the public hearing etiquette is. It's here on, on the board being projected. So, our chairperson, Messina, will recognize all of the comments that are addressed through the microphone up here. Please speak clearly into the microphone. As was stated, you have three minutes. Be respectful to others, and keep the comments constructive. Avoid repetition of what has already been said, and any presented exhibits become part of the city's public hearing record. As also was stated, this is the progression of a hearing, and Tom did a good job at that. Also, at any point, Planning Commission may ask for clarification or additional information. So before we begin, I also wanted to let the Planning Commission know that we have all of our departments here to answer any questions except for police. So, we have parks, streets and engineering, water, wastewater, and fire. Thank you. We do have police here, but I'm not sure they're ready to speak. All right, with that, we'll get started.
Sean, right before, I'm sorry to interrupt. Also, if for some reason you didn't sign up, and during the course of the meeting, you decide you want to speak, I'll, before I close public testimony, I'll ask if anyone else wants to speak, and you just come up at that time.
Sean, may I make one more interruption about the public? Okay, so for people that signed up, there's a sign in there, so by signing up, you swear or affirm to tell the truth. So rather than swear everybody in like we normally do, just because of the crowd, by putting your name on there, you have indicated you will tell the truth. Also, for the public, they'll be going to the microphone in the center for the, when the public hearing, for the public testimony starts.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Sean.
And Victor is also back there to help anyone out to get signed up, so that we have a record. Thank you. Okay, so let's begin. Today, I usually say tonight, but we're starting a little bit early in anticipation of public comments. We have an application before the Planning Commission. It is A420, or 2022. It's a core tier annexation. It's a request for approximately 440 acres to be included into the city limits with specific zoning. The applicant is Cootney County Land Company LLC. The consultant is Connie Kruger, AICP. As I just stated, that they are requesting an annexation. It is currently in Cootney County, within the city's ACI. In Cootney County, it is zoned ag suburban. The request that the applicants have made is for a mix of zoning districts R8, R17, C17L, and C17. So this is the vicinity map of the property. It's a little difficult to get 440 acres onto a screen. Hopefully, this shows up for everybody to be able to see. You know, it lends itself pretty well to be rotated 90 degrees, but I thought Planning Commission probably didn't want to see everyone out in the audience tilt their heads sideways to look at the screen. So, Pole Line Avenue is up here in the county. It runs east-west. It does dead-end at Hutter, which runs north-south. This would be completed at some point in the near future to connect. It's Hanley right here, and that stops right near where this water tower is at. The city limits is denoted in green. You can see I-90 runs at the south end of the property, near the south end of the property here, and here is Atlas Road. The city's ACI, which is the area of city impact, is denoted in yellow. This is a bird's eye view. This is looking north at the subject property from an elevated position. You can see the extents of what the request is. There are two large-scale single-family properties that are not part of the annexation, and this white dashed line denotes the extents of that. This is looking at it from 180 degrees in the opposite direction with Spokane River at the top of the photo here. Okay. So as it currently sits, these are the legal parcels that exist, and there are 14 of them total. They are numbered and labeled here. There is a little sliver here, number eight, that is defined over here in the red text. There's a Washington Water Power piece of property that the applicant has acquired. So this is a reflection of what the districts are. I'll pull up a map. The next slide will show where they're at. But for the R8 district, the main district is about 234 acres. R17, there's a north, middle, and south district, 114, six, and 30 acres respectively. C17L for existing water tower site, a future well site, and then the C17 north district and the south district are 12 acres and 39 acres. So this is what that request looks like. Over here on the left-hand side, this is the applicant's request. This is currently what the zoning is in the county. So it's currently zoned ag suburban, as I stated earlier, and the request, this kind of orangest color, is the R17 request. C17, which is a commercial zoning district, is this red color. R8, which is largely a single-family residential district, it does allow for duplexes, but it takes the same amount of square footage for two, for a duplex as it does for two single-family homes. So it's 99% of the time, people will build single-family homes instead of duplex if it requires the same amount of property. R17 right here, C17L up in the corner, this is where the water tower is. C17L here, which is a future well site. C17 along this western edge. R17 here. And then this R17, as well as this R17, are slated to be future school sites. There is an MOU between the applicant and the school district that the city isn't a part of, but we thought we would mention it. So that legend is over here color-coded. All right. So there are four required findings that Planning Commission is asked to take a look at, to recommend to city council on annexation, as well as what the zoning should be. And these are those findings, and we'll move through those findings now. So for finding B8 is that the proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. So we do have a new comprehensive plan now. It's the 2022 to 2042 comprehensive plan, and it is, it is denoted as being within the area of city impact. There are four comprehensive plan land use categories that are identified in the plan: single-family, compact, urban, and mixed-use low. This is what that looks like inside of the comprehensive plan. On the right-hand side is the full city limits with all of those land use categories that are found here as the land use types. These four are in the applicant's request, which is reflected here when it's zoomed in. And each one of these is defined in the comprehensive plan. Single-family neighborhood, everybody knows pretty much what that is. Compatible zoning for a single family is R1, R3, R5, and R8, as well as MH8, which is a mobile home district. It lists out here what the transportation would normally look like, what typical uses are found inside of a single-family neighborhood, as well as the building types. So a compact neighborhood is similar. It does have a little more density. Their building types listed here: single-family, duplex, triplex, fourplex, townhomes, green courts, and auto courts. So it is a step up from the single-family zone. Those zones that are compatible with the compact neighborhood land use type are R12, R17, MH8, NC, and CC, which is neighborhood commercial and community commercial. The applicant hasn't asked for those, by the way. But urban neighborhood is a highly walkable neighborhood. The typical uses are multifamily residential, neighborhood parks, recreation facilities, parking, offices, and commercial-type development. The building types are apartments, condos, and townhomes. The compatible zoning are R17, R34, which requires a special use permit, neighborhood commercial, community commercial, C17, and C17L. Last but not least is the mixed-use low, and the compatible zoning for, for these types of land uses are C17, C17L, neighborhood commercial, and community commercial. The transportation here is a gridded main street with pedestrian connections, high ease of use of pedestrian and bicycle facilities, so connected very well. Typical uses are retail, commercial, office, restaurant, multifamily, residential, and secondary uses are civic uses and parking. Sometimes you'll find living units on, on top of those types of commercial uses, and that is approximately a four-story type development. So our comprehensive plan also describes transportation. There's three different maps that are located in the comp plan. One is for the existing and planned bicycle network. Thanks to the Parks Department for helping us with this. You can see here where those paths are. The purple is a bicycle lane. The green is a multi-use path. The orange is a shared roadway, and those solid ones are for existing. The dashed ones are for planned facilities in the future. The middle exhibit is existing and planned walking network, so this is more of the sidewalks, those types of improvements. So multi-use paths, existing hiking trails are included in existing sidewalks. And last but not least are the, is the existing transit network. This is the CityLink bus system and what the path of each one of those routes are. And there's three routes, A, B, and C. Okay. Also in the comprehensive plan is the plan policy framework, and there are two areas that lent itself the best to this request. Community on identity is that the Coeur d'Alene citizens are well-informed, responsive, and involved in community discussions. That's why everyone is here, which is thank you for your involvement. We do appreciate you showing up. So foster broad-based and inclusive community involvement for actions affecting businesses and residents to promote community unity and involvement, as well as goal community and identity. Number three is Coeur d'Alene will strive to be livable for median and below-income levels, including young families, working-class, low-income, and fixed-income households. And the objective is to support efforts to preserve, preserve existing housing stock and provide opportunities for new affordable and workforce housing. The second is growth and development. There are some goals and objectives here. Develop a mix of land uses throughout the city. Achieve a balance of housing product types and price points, including affordable housing. Recognize neighborhood and district identities. Ensure appropriate, high-quality infrastructure to accommodate needs and future growth, and ensure that appropriate, high-quality infrastructure to accommodate growth and development are available. Okay, catch up here. Sorry for the page turning. That's probably loud. Okay, so this is finding B9, that public facilities and utilities are or are not available and adequate for the proposed use. So based on the recent code update, allowing the city to enter into development agreements, which was ordinance 3704, which was adopted in July, on July 5th, as approved by the state of Idaho, staff has also included suggested conditions of approval to be included and negotiated. Those are towards the end. I tried to pare this back as much as possible. No one wants to read 1,000 lines of text, but towards the end, that is coming. It's, it's just not in two areas in, in my PowerPoint. So you can find those staff comments on pages 21 through 23 of the, of the report, as well as 37 through 39 for the development agreement recommendations. Also note that a draft annexation and development agreement will be included in the city council's public hearing packet, based on city staff comments and any additional elements that Planning Commission includes in the findings, if any. So finding B10, that the physical characteristics of the site do or do not make it suitable for the request at this time. So that here is an elevation map that's showing five-foot contours. It's a little difficult to see, but the land out here is very, very flat. Like this elevation is 2280, as well as this one, as well as this one. So it is, it is almost entirely flat, based on the overall size. There's two areas on the south end that have grade changes, and they're denoted here in red. An existing water tower is sighted in the northeast corner, which I pointed out up here. Otherwise, the parcels are vacant. Hutter Road on the west side of the property that runs north and south, it's a two-lane road that will provide future access to the site. The south side of the property is bordered by North Idaho Maritime, which is here, as well as the existing Woodside Single Family Neighborhood, which provides multiple access points, which we will discuss here in a moment. The east side of the property is adjoined by the Coeur d'Alene Industrial Park, which is basically this top third, as well as existing residential established neighborhoods for the, the bottom two-thirds of the property. So here are some of those pictures of, of the area. Let's see here. This is at the Wedgwood Loop Tournament, Terminus, looking north into the property, and you can see out here, it's pretty darn flat. Looking north into the subject property from the terminus of Woodside Avenue is this picture here. This is looking east from the south end of the subject property, near that Wedgwood end of the street, looking directly down the south end of the property, which is right along this property line, which is denoted by the fence. And then, at this corner, up near these homes, looking north is this picture, and that is looking toward the water tower, although you might not be able to see it. It's way out there. Right, so looking north into the subject property at the Wedgwood, or actually, this is looking west, sorry. So this is looking towards Hutter, which is out along this far edge, and then this is further down where I had denoted and read that there is a change to grade. That is this change to grade right here, which is not extreme by any means. So the Appaloosa Right-of-Way Terminus is right along here. This property owner has fenced off a portion of the right-of-way, so on the back side of that, along the, the southern edge of the property is where that Appaloosa Right-of-Way terminates right here. And then, looking south from the southwest corner, you can see the I-90 overpass, as well as Hutter along this edge that drives underneath of I-90, and then doing a 180 and looking north, this is Hutter Road looking north. Then on the other side, or the eastern side of the property, Arrowhead Road dead-ends into the subject property right here, with the subject property being just behind that, and then Nez Perce Road also dead-ends into the property here. You can see the subject property just on the other side. There is another property that terminates in, or another access right-of-way that terminates into the subject property. Two of them. One is Laurel Avenue, that has these rocks, as well as spires, that has these Jersey barriers. So on the north end of the property, I added these. These are not in my report. It was very difficult for me to get a good picture that included everything enough to be able to explain to everybody what you're looking at, but using Street View, Google Street View, I was able to capture a wide enough angle photo to show where that water tower is, is where, as well as that eastern property line. You can barely see the road along this edge. The Prairie Trail runs along here, next to Hanley, and then Hanley would dead-end right here, and there's some barriers along that edge, and that would be extended in the future. So looking southeast towards the subject property from the northwest corner of Hutter Road and Pole Line is this. You can see the water tower is right here. The edge of that property runs along this edge, and then Hutter is that western north-south edge of the property. Okay, let me catch back up again. So this is a map of annexations by year. Not sure if everyone's able to see what those years are. I can go through theirs real quick. But to the north is about 2006 is when the original Hawks Nest was annexed into the city. You can see here, the, the industrial park in 82, this one's 75, 2000, where the dog park and the future church site is, 1982, along here, 73, 1990 to the south, and that's, those are the properties that I had data on that are in city limits that are but the city property. So this area of Coeur d'Alene has a mix of development and uses that have spanned many decades. Due to the subject, the subject property size is adjacent to a number of established single-family neighborhoods. Two large parcel homes on the east side of Hutter, which are right here, these two carve-outs, are not included within the request. They would remain in Cootney County, although they are located within the city's ACI. Also, here is a map of the existing near, nearby rights-of-way that terminate into the property, as well as ones that share an edge. The police did provide a comment. Lee White said, "As long as the ingress and egress concerns are properly addressed by Streets and Engineering's through a traffic study, then the police department does not have any major issues with this annexation request." All right. So I'll also talk about traffic here. So the proposed annexation itself would not adversely, and this is, was submitted by Chris Bosley, our city engineer. He is here for, for questions, if you would like to ask him any questions. But the proposed annexation itself would not adversely affect the surrounding area with regard to traffic, as no traffic is generated from an annexation alone. Impacts would occur with each phase of development and would be analyzed at that time. A traffic study was conducted by CivTech using current Cootney Metropolitan Planning Organization, or KMPO, modeling data. The Streets and Engineering Department had no objections to this annexation request with the following conditions in the annexation and development agreement to manage traffic, and that is to connect to existing streets without delay when construction reaches the point of requiring those connections. So this map right here, hopefully everyone can read this. This are the, are the names of the neighborhoods and other adjacencies that are close by to the subject property. I tried to increase the font size, but it ended up making it unreadable or very difficult to see what the actual neighborhoods are. So we have Brickert County Estates. This is in the county on the northwest corner. There's a large lot, single-family unit here. The Trails to the north and Hawks Nest to the northeast, as stated before. Industrial Park, you have the North Shire subdivision here. Indian Meadows, Queen Anna Estates, Orchard Lands over here, Woodside Park to the south, and North Idaho Maritime. Out in the county is, there's some agricultural land that the applicant does own, and then two large lot, single-family dwelling units, and new development down here. Not sure exactly what that is. It was under construction when I was out there. Okay, so existing land uses. This is finding B11. So that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and/or existing land uses. So the land uses out here, there's a mix of land uses that are in the, the park over here. Number of commercial ones, which are the red, the gray, are manufacturing. There are some vacant parcels as well. The yellow denotes single-family neighborhoods. I believe there's a couple of more duplexes that are around the edge of this, of this future church and dog park. Those single-family uses run along this edge and across the south end. Property to the north is vacant, and you do have property out in the, in the county as well. So existing zoning, this is the zones that currently exist inside of city limits. R8 to the north, manufacturing to the east, R3 to the east, R1 to the east, and R3 to the south. All right. So Planning Commission Annexation and Development Agreement considerations. So remember how I said earlier that I wasn't going to put this in here twice? This is where all of that language exists. So I do not really want to read all of this in the record. I'll try and do my best to append this, but I will read the note, is that the following items are specific to this But I will read the note, is that the following items are specific to this annexation and are potential conditions that are subject to negotiation between the parties. All other city policies and department requirements for development are obligatory and included in the Annexation and Development Agreement. So the Water Department, I have some bulleted points here. There is a 24-inch transmission line that runs north-south on the east side of the subject property. And that will need to be maintained or replaced at the developer's expense if they decide to change the alignment of that. So the water storage tank, the city currently does not own the land underneath, although we do own the tank. We are requiring that the developer has mutually agreed upon, transfer it to the city. The well parcel that I had spoke of further to the south of that. And then water rights for the property will be addressed in the Annexation and Development Agreement. So wastewater, there was five potential projects that came from JUB Engineering. They took a look at the site and identified any areas that may need improvements as needed as development occurs. Those five, those five projects are listed here. Streets and Engineering, this is some comments about where the bypass may or may not be. And the city does desire that Hutter Road shall be reconstructed from the southern extent of development to Hanley Road for a three-lane arterial. And that be a minimum, and that the right-of-way be a minimum of 100 feet wide. There's also a request here that the right-of-way for the Hutter bypass be provided by the applicant, that is outside of city limits. And that Hanley Avenue be built to the future configuration as modeled for 2045. Also, that the Nez Perce Road and Hanley Avenue intersection be constructed as modeled for 2045. Also, there is, there are a couple of tiny slivers that run outside of the city's ACI or just to the west of that. We are requiring that those be subdivided and conveyed to the Post Falls Highway District that currently takes care of Hutter Road. And that the ACI should, anything, any lands beyond the ACI should not be annexed into the city at this time. So planning, we have listed out here. This is a modification of what are some of our restrictions are in infill overlay districts, as well as our downtown, for uses that don't necessarily fit into an area that allows for walkability. So those are requested to be limited. Also, we talked with the applicant, and they are agreeable that 5% of the residential units would qualify as an affordable workforce housing type in conjunction with Paha. So I understand that Paha is here to speak to that. And then an ongoing concurrency analysis. This is a way for the applicant, as well as the city, to keep track of those elements over time, so that we are sure nothing falls through the cracks. And also, this request is for annexation and zoning only. So parks, parks is requested two community, or two parks, one a community park and a residential park, 10 and 8 acres respectively, as well as two trails that traverse north-south and two east-west that would tie into existing trail improvements or future trail improvements. Also, there is another section here. This is the school district MOU that I spoke about earlier for the two future school sites, as well as electric transmission lines, such as natural gas, electric, or other, may exist on the property, and that they will need to respect those and alter, extinguish if needed. All right, so with that, that concludes my staff report. Planning Commission is tasked with recommending zoning for the annexation request. The commission shall, there's three items here, provide a recommendation of zoning to city council. The commission may also provide an evaluation of how the proposed annexation does or does not meet the required criteria for an annexation, together with any recommended conditions on annexation, or continue the hearing to a date, time certain, for additional information or to resume testimony. And before I turn this back over to Planning Commission, we do have Ally Marino here from KMPO, and she would like to provide a little bit of additional context of the area from a traffic perspective. So let me end this and get hers queued up, so that she may speak.
Sean, can I ask you a question before we?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and maybe Hillary, you can add to this too. But can you explain, we just have a recent development agreement that we approved and city council approved. I know this ties in at some point. Can you give a little background, how that might tie in? And with the agreement considerations, you can explain what that considerations might be, and how that might all tie in down the road, what the developer might agree to or might not agree to. So can you touch on that a little bit?
Yes, and I can probably explain it as well as a planner can, but there may be some legalese behind this. I might lean on Randy for a minute if I start to get us sideways on this. So we did recently, as a city, pass a developer agreement ordinance. And what that does is allows the city to go into contract with a developer that requires that certain things be done for an annexation or a zone change, or a special use permit, or some sort of consideration by the city to change or do something different than what already exists, and their uses by right. And so if you remember, you guys did review this as it came through the wickets, as it was approved by city council, that Planning Commission asked that we include kind of that higher 30,000-foot view of what may be in that developer, development agreement, and that we would let you know what those items are, because that is currently being worked on by staff in our legal department. That will be firmed up in a draft, will go to council with anything that Planning Commission may decide to add. City council may add something if they decide to annex this property in. And following that, they authorize staff to work with the applicant to negotiate the terms of that development agreement. And then we bring it back to council at the very end for final approval.
In this situation, this hearing, we're not approving any development agreements. At this point, we are approving or not approving the annexation and the requested zone designations that the applicant is asking tonight.
Correct, you make a recommendation to city council.
Okay, as far as the proposed zone district map that the applicant is asking for, compared to, compared to the future land use map on page 13, which is in our package, I kind of did a little, you know, what's compatible in that land use maps in what they're asking for? And I know we went through extensive meetings on how to get that land use. What's the feel of the staff of, you know, here's our comp plan that says we have four designation of land use, but according to what the applicant, on their request, which is on page 10 of our staff report, they're kind of changing it all around to a lot different type of zonings for that. And I'm trying to get a handle on, you know, how did we go from what the comp plan said to what?
Right, right. If you, so stepping away from developer agreements and moving towards the development of the comprehensive plan, if you'll remember that MIG, the applicant had requested that MIG take a look at this property at that time. And so when they looked at it, they worked together to come up with a plan. At that time, and still to this date today, no one is absolutely certain that that Hutter bypass is going to be constructed. And so there was some back and forth between MIG and the applicant to determine, hey, if this goes in, what does this look like? Suffice it to say that the four land uses that were in the plan are reflected in this 440 acres. They just have shifted a bit. And so if you'll remember that the comprehensive plan is not an ordinance, it is a recommended guideline to future development of the city of Coeur d'Alene. So it is up to Planning Commission to determine, is this close enough? Is this something that Planning Commission can support? Or would you like to stay steadfast to what that land use map had set?
Okay, because the compatible land uses, I put on my page here, R8 is the most, the biggest portion of the applicant's zone change or zone request. Most of that is either compatible with our new comp plan, future land use map of R12 or R17, R1, R3, and R5. So there's a lot of mixes that can go into the bigger portion or the green portion of what they're asking for for R8. And I'm on page 10 of our staff report, if you need to put it up on the screen. But I just wanted to get a feel for that, and didn't know if any of the other commissioners have any other questions.
Go ahead.
Can I have a related question? So if an annexation is approved, is the designated zoning as proposed binding? So right now, it lists four different types of zoning, and it gives us a proposed zoning district map. But how do we make sure, because it, how do we make sure there's not a bunch of C-17 that gets dumped where it says R8 now, for example? So is the proposed zoning part of the annexation agreement or part of the developer agreement that comes back? How do we make sure that the commitment to have the different zoning is reflected?
So excellent question. Staff took a look at this as well. That was one of our concerns. So if you take a look up here, this is the current configuration of the parcels that are in the county. And it does not currently match what the applicant is requesting, which is this. And so as part of the application, this application came in a number of months ago, and staff took a look at it and said, hey, well, based upon the zoning that you're recommending, we are going to require that you have legal descriptions of each one of those zones. And so the city has on file, as part of the application, a legal description by meets and bounds every single one of these zones that's described on this map. And if council decides to approve that, that is what they would be approving, which mirrors their exhibit. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
And I guess, to further clarify, maybe the same similar question. So for example, the two school sites that are zoned R17, would they be then, if annexed, they would then be by right to be used in that, in those zones for, if they wanted to use it for a school site for R17, or they decided they wanted it to be a neighborhood zoned R17?
That's another great question. Thank you. So if it comes into the city with the zoning that is here, there are certain associated uses by right for each zone. And so an R17 does allow some of those uses that you are suggesting, but it would require that anything beyond, you know, it would have to stay in this configuration, or actually, the county configuration, unless a subdivision application, and maybe in conjunction with a PUD application, came forward to Planning Commission for approval that subdivided that, that allowed for the access and the improvements of a subdivision before development could happen at that level. As stated before, there is an MOU between the applicant and the subdivision. The city isn't a part of that, but it could be, you know, that is a suggestion or a consideration for the development agreement that Planning Commission could request that city council include in that development agreement is to, quote-unquote, require that those sites become a future school site. That is, as I understand it, and Randy can back me up on this or shoot me down in flames, but I believe that is something that can happen in a development agreement.
Okay, and we, I mean, depending on how this goes tonight, with the requested zone changes, I'm sure we're going to see this piece of property back to us a few times with some PUDs or special use permits, but they still would have to be within the zone, let's say, if this gets approved tonight, within the zoning that's being approved this evening by the applicant. So we would see that a number of times, and public can chime in on that as well down the road and stuff, as a public hearing meeting.
Correct, for subdivision, PUD, or special use permit, or something like that, they would have to come back for future approval.
Okay, questions? Go ahead, Sean.
Question for you, Sean. Great report, by the way. I appreciate all your effort in this one. You know, up here, one of the things we do is we read through a lot of comments that come in by email and letters and whatnot. I don't know if those folks are even going to be here or testify, but, you know, their input is going to be part of the record and such, and we give it weight. Seems to be a lot of, you know, concern about traffic. And we're going to hear more about that. We're about to shift gears and hear from, you know, KMPO. We may hear from Mr. Bosley, et cetera. And we may drill down on these five connector sites, and all of this and that, and then the Hutter bypass, and all those kind of things. But, so you got traffic over here, and I'm on the other side of the equation. I'm trying to figure out, how did they, we'll hear from the applicant, how did you do the traffic study without, or maybe do know, how many housing units? So I'm kind of getting to a question having to do with housing units. 440 acres, if it was all R8, that would work out to 50, 50, or 3,520 units. But that's if it was all R8, and that would be gross, and before you take away the schools and everything else. I'm just throwing out a macro number. I don't know what the number is, but, you know, in our packet, you know, there's concerns of traffic, and we'll hear more. But there's also, you know, a great bit of support from, I counted six agencies. The Coeur d'Alene Area Economic Development Corporation, Jaclyn Land Company, Northwest Specialty Hospital, Rathram Chamber, Coeur d'Alene Chamber, Post Falls Chamber, a lot of support for more housing. So where I'm going with that is, you know, we know we have a great need for additional housing. There's a shortage of housing. People can't recruit, people can't get more police officers, because they can't, they can't live here and whatnot. We all hear that. So what I'd like to get from you, if you have the number, Sean, and if not, just punt it, and we'll hear more from the applicants and others. But, you know, I want to hear a little bit more of, okay, you got the traffic on one side, but, you know, how much benefit is coming? How many units is it that we're going to get? You know, is it a variety of housing units? Are we going to have condos, townhouses, and apartments in addition to single-family and whatnot? And, you know, I want to hear more about this 5% commitment. And does that apply a universal for ownership, or rental, or whatnot? But anything you could throw out with respect to, how much housing does this provide? And how much will this help our shortage of housing? Thank you.
Appreciate the question. I wish I was able to answer it, and I'm glad that you brought this up, because this is something that Hillary and I talked about, is, you know, managing the expectations or the understandings of the people that show up, as well as Planning Commission and the applicant. At this point, what they are requesting is annexation into city limits with specific zone. And so this is where we're at. We do not know yet what may be coming down the pike exactly. I would defer to the applicant for that. I mean, they have given us a rough plan. I'm sure they have some ideas of what that is to be. But just be aware, Planning Commission, that the request before you tonight is request for annexation with specific zoning. So you can, they can tell you exactly what it may or may not be, but be aware of what the request actually is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. A couple, I think, quick questions. Basically, our option night is either to recommend approval of both or deny them both, the annexation, the zonings. Is that correct?
If I understand your question correctly, if I heard you correctly, the annexation is predicated upon zoning be applied to it. So you can't have one without the other. is predicated upon zoning be applied to it, so you can't have one without the other.
Right. So it's either deny both or approve both, is the bottom line.
Or something different.
Okay. One other thing, in the staff report, it talks about site reviews. Now, I think they're all strictly administrative, so if they wanted to build on the zoning as shown here, they simply file for a building permit and go through the site review process that any application would go through. They don't necessarily come back here or to any other committee for a review. Is that correct?
It depends on what level they're trying to construct to. So the code of the city of Coeur d'Alene would currently allow two units on a parcel in the city of Coeur d'Alene and that, for everything except for R17, which is a multifamily district. And so for that R8 district, for all of that green that you see there that they request as a use by right, they could have two single family houses, a single family house and an ADU, and that's it for that entire, for that parcel.
Other than possibly the need for a plat, would there be any other reason for these requests to come back before this board?
They would, I mean, there, there are uses by right. I think that's what you're getting at is each one of these zones.
If it requires a special permit, I understand, but is there anything with what they get here, other than having to plat the property, that would bring it back before this committee to see the lot configuration and roadway alignments and such?
It would require them to come back for that.
And if they did a PUD, a planned unit development or special use permit?
I have one final thing. We have a development agreement, but if I'm hearing you correctly, the park sites and school sites are in the agreement, but they're not binding on the city to require those. Is that correct?
The school sites is a, is a memorandum of understanding between the applicant and District 271. And so we're not a, a party to that MOU. So if it is planning commission's desire to recommend to city council that that school, that the schools be included in, in the future development in some form, roughly what they are showing here, you're welcome to, to pass that on to city council for consideration.
Thank you, Sean.
Absolutely.
Sean, I've got one more question, and just for clarification, I'm on page 28 of our staff report.
Give me just a second.
Sure. Under planning, the last paragraph.
What page did you say? 28?
38.
Oh, 38.
Oh, 38.
Sorry, I don't understand my accent.
Greek.
Why do you have to have pictures? It was nice.
Yeah, that's a short one.
Okay, I believe I am there.
Okay, just on the last paragraph, and I'll read it. This request is for annexation and zoning designation only. The applicant has provided preliminary conceptual design information that is not binding at this time. Staff suggests that at a minimum, the annexation and development agreement includes language that ties future subdivision applications to generally adhere to alignment of transportation, product types, place types, trails, public parks are shown in the conceptual design. So I take it this will be part of the future discussion for that development agreement. But what we see here, preliminary conceptual design information is not binding at this time. So if we approve this, the, the design could change or not change, or how does that work out?
So the reason why planning department added this as a bullet point is because the applicant, through their narrative, had said that they, they desire a degree of flexibility depending on what the market may be, and they didn't want to come back and amend a PUD numerous times if the market may change, so they wanted some flexibility. That being said, they have a master plan that they have provided us that doesn't lend itself to the nature of an annexation request. So you may see some things tonight that, hey, we're going to build this or provide that. At this point, annexation and zoning is the request. And so there is no, at, at this juncture, there is no binding requirement that that be that specific way.
So basically, if I understand what you just said, what we're looking at and what we might or might not approve, might not.
Why?
Be what it is.
It's conceptual.
Yeah.
But we get a chance to see the details later. So, you know, we hold, we hold the cards, right?
I hope we get back, but as Commissioner Ward mentioned, that, you know, what will or what not come back here. If by right, we say, all right, you have R8, R17, and you go by, put a building application and you go in and fill out that application by right, off they go.
Although there's, I mean, there, the last phrase says that future subdivision applications must adhere to the alignment of four, four general parameters. So product types, trails, parks, alignment of transportation. So there's some, it's not binding, but there's some expectations of, even though there's that flexibility, there's still some requirement to adhere to some of those principles, even in the conceptual design. Is that right?
That's correct. So that staff intentionally put that in there because we'd like to be able to have that commitment, that we have those details, even allowing some flexibility.
So we do have some teeth, I guess, now.
Well, what I'm getting to.
Development agreement.
Our decision is binding tonight. What we make, our decision is binding. And I'm trying to get a feel, my comfort level, whatever my decision might be, is it binding or is it just, all right, we made a decision and according to this, things can change. Randy, do you?
Well, your decision is to recommend zoning to the city council.
Okay.
The city council will make the decision on whether to annex and whether to accept your recommendation on zoning. That's, those are the issues currently, and you as planning commission can evaluate the overall plan and make recommendations as to what could go into a development agreement. But the only, you aren't actually making any binding decision tonight.
Okay.
You make a recommendation as to zoning, period. And then you can make recommendations as to other things, but again, it all comes back to city council.
Okay.
Randy, in that development agreement, could we make the recommendation along with others that the plat comes through planning commission prior to approval?
It has to.
I mean, it has to, but I mean.
We're going to see, we would see a subdivision agreement.
We'd see it either way.
And/or PUD. You can't go right to the building department.
Right.
You have to come back.
So it'll come back. Yeah. Or.
So just based upon the zoning that you see up there and what I had said earlier about, you know, that entire R8, they could have two single family homes, they can build much more densely in the county than do that. So the subdivisions will come back to planning commission.
Yeah.
At what form or what they look like, I'm, I'm not sure what that would be. We're at the annexation request stage.
So to be clear, it's a, it's recommendations to council, it's nothing binding. And what is listed in comments for an annexation development agreement are recommendations of things to put in the development agreement, but we're not doing that development agreement tonight.
That is correct. And, and your recommendations will be considered by council.
Yeah.
There will be a negotiation between the city, staff, and the developer on what should go into that development agreement. And then that will be presented to council, which may change the development agreement. But again, it's, it's, that's the council's decision on, on what goes in a development agreement.
Okay.
May I point out one other thing? So when they come forward, if this is annexed with the zoning, if they come forward for subdivision or planned unit development, we can open up the development agreement again. There will be amendments, there will be addendums, there will be more detail added. So this isn't the only opportunity, chance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Hillary.
All right. If we have no more questions, Sean, who are you going to introduce to come up again? I'm sorry.
Ally Marino from KMPO.
Okay.
She's here, she has a few slides to go over. I'll tee it up for her. Thank you, Al.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I am Ally Marino. I'm the transportation planner for the Cootney Metropolitan Planning Organization. And the city asked me to come and just provide some additional information on traffic and the modeling that was used for the traffic portion of the applicant's application. We did the modeling. The city asked us to utilize our travel demand model because it is regionally focused and at this higher level of the process, it was just a good idea to get what traffic might be generated from this sort of development into the city. So hopefully I can provide some additional clarification for you all on the modeling process as well as the results. Just for your background as well as for people in the audience, KMPO is the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Cootney County. We were established in 2003. We're a federally mandated organization, and so across the country, every urban area, once it reaches a population of 50,000, is required to have an MPO. And we help ensure continuing comprehensive and cooperative transportation planning throughout our planning area. We're overseen by a board that consists of the four major cities, Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls, Hayden, and Rathram, the four highway districts, the Idaho Transportation Department, Cootney County, and the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. And we also work closely with our technical committee that is made up of technical staff from those agencies as well. So the, the travel demand model is a transportation, transportation planning tool that we utilize for our long range transportation planning that helps us identify existing and future issues so that we can be proactive and plan for transportation investments as we go into the future, not that we are caught behind and we see large amounts of congestion or our transportation system breaking down. We helped to, this model helps us to determine the type, size, and location of transportation improvements and help quantify the impacts of growth and land use changes on our transportation network. Our model specifically is a peak hour model, so we only look at the AM and PM peak periods kind of of a typical weekday, so primarily those main traveling hours for people to work or school. So as far as the travel demand model goes, looking at the types of data inputs that are used, it's based off of land use. We use occupied dwelling units, employment, and other, so, such as students or acres of agriculture lands or public lands, that sort of thing. And then these are grouped in what we call traffic analysis zones. So not every unit can be represented in the model, it's a regional model. This takes into account the 170,000 people that live in the county as well as the employees and that sort of thing. And so these traffic analysis zones group these land uses into specific geographic areas that are kind of bound by different types of land uses and topography. And we kind of separate residential from commercial and that sort of thing. Our model also includes federally designated roadways, so a collector designation or higher. We have very minimal local roadways. And then we include intersections. And then we also use local traffic counts and other data to help us ensure that our model is replicating existing conditions. So just as an example, we've been working with some data from INRICS. This is an intersection at Atlas Road and Hanley from a few days ago, and you can see how the intersection is operating. These kind of green, levels of green, dark green, light green are showing that things are working well. Yellow, you can maybe see some congestion or issues with maybe that left, that westbound left turn. So we kind of use this data to determine if our model is replicating current conditions. We have another example here, currently at Atlas Road and Kathleen. These are two specific intersections kind of in the study area, so we wanted to use them as an example. So then we have our current model that replicates currently 2020 land uses, but we also have forecast models. And our main forecast is 2045, and we have interim years as well. But these forecasts we develop in assistance with all of the local agencies. And these are kind of based on the vision of local comprehensive and land use plans where future land uses are placed throughout the region. Our population and employment data is adopted by our board and used as a control total at the TAS level, so we're not over projecting in specific areas. And we also work with the local agencies to hand place some of that data in areas where they feel like development will occur in the future. Our, the future transportation projects that are included in the forecast are based off of local transportation plans from the agencies, other studies that have occurred, as well as other needs that have been identified through modeling or public input. Our travel demand model is a traditional four-step model. We don't include the step of mode distribution because we are primarily auto-oriented in Cootney County, so we don't include transit, walking, or biking currently in our model. So we only use three steps. One is trip generation. So it takes the land use and it determines based on that land use, how many trips and what types of trips will occur. We then do trip distribution, and that determines where those trips are going to start and where they're going to end throughout the region. So again, this covers all of Cootney County. And then the third step of the model is trip assignment. So it takes those A to Z destinations and it assigns routes to the actual transportation network. And the model chooses the path of least resistance. So in areas where you have a lot of congestion, it's going to force the model to push trips onto different routes. So if you have an area such as, just an example, Atlas and Hanley, if there's a lot of congestion at that intersection, it's going to start pushing trips down to Southeast Way or up to Prairie Avenue. So that is kind of the basic steps of how the model determines results. So currently, we, as I said, we have a 2035 and a 2045 forecast model. And just to keep in mind, some of the projects included in these models, as we're looking forward into the future, include the widening of Highway 41, the widening of I-90 through the urban area, the connection of Paul Lane Avenue and Hanley, and then widening of Atlas and Hutter Roads to three lanes. It also includes some developments such as prairie crossing, which will be at Highway 41 and Prairie Avenue, additional commercial land use along Hutter Road, more development on the west side of Hutter and east side of Highway 41 with a connection with, from Melinda Meyer, and then also the buildout of Atlas Waterfront. These are just some examples. In our 2045 model, for this version, it, our projection is about 340,000 population for 2045. So includes a lot of additional land use, but these are some additional projects I just wanted to note. So for the core TERRA modeling, and maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but I wanted to kind of explain what went into the model, what we, what we did model and what the results of that were. So we did, we looked at our 2035 and 2045 models. We did a version with and without the core TERRA development. We also looked at scenarios with and without the Hutter bypass. So you'll see, we added in for the build version about 1,300, 1,400 residential units split between single and multifamily, additional retail and school employment plus the school sites, some park space. And in the conceptual design, the applicant also includes an extension of Mullen Avenue from Hutter Road to Atlas Road via Nez Perce, and then also a north and south, south collector from Mullen Avenue to Hanley Avenue. And I'm sorry, I didn't include any graphics, but we can kind of look at that in just a moment, I'll point those out. So these are, you're not going to be able to read the numbers on this, but you can kind of see the colors. And areas where you see red to purple is where you start to see increased congestion, maybe some of those areas are starting to fail. And on the left side of the screen, you have the no build. Um, and on the left side of the screen, you have the no-build version, so this is without the core TERRA development. And on the right, you have the build scenario. As I said, you have, in the middle, I don't have a pointer either, you can see the additional um roadway connection, thank you, um, north and south and east and west. And so in this, you can see there, with the addition of those collector roads, you have actually some decreased congestion on Hanley Avenue as well as Hutter Road. And um I would point out that this is because um that additional east-west connection, a lot of traffic is being pushed to Kathleen and then across on that new Mullen extension. And so it's relieving um some pressure on Hanley, Pole Line, um as well as Seltice. Um, and then additional use of Atlas as well, so that's reducing some traffic on Hutter as well. Um, that's not to say that there's less traffic, it's just the traffic patterns are shifting with the additional roadway network. Um, so then you also have the AM, you ti- typically have less traffic in the AM peak as well, but you can see there is some reduction of congestion on Hanley to the north. Um, that's kind of the main, main takeaway there. I mean, this is just the twenty forty-five um comparisons. So as far as the overall results from the modeling that we did, um and then the applicant then used this in their application, um primarily you see a significant shift in travel patterns due to the additional collector road network that is proposed through the applicant's conceptual design. Um, so they add in a much-needed connect, east-west connection south of Hanley and north of Southeast Way. Um, right now, currently, people have to either take Seltice or Prairie Avenue. There's no east-west connections in that vicinity. Um, and so with the model, you see a lot of people rerouting because of that additional connection. Um, as I said, with the increased number of trips, you see additional traffic on Atlas and Kathleen, and there is um in roadway sections, additional traffic on Hanley and Hutter as well. Um, keep in mind that this is our twenty forty-five forecast, so you can think of all the additional regional improvements that are included in this model as well. Um, as I noted, there is some planned widening on Hutter as well as Atlas Road. And so when we look at this facility, or this development placed in this area, most facilities with the planned improvements um can tolerate the additional traffic generated by this development. Um, a, with the additional retail and school that is proposed in this, you also have some increased internal trips within the TASZ that isn't being replicated on the actual um roadways in our model. Um, so those are being retained within that development area. Um, and then there are some locations that will still beside, even before this development, that will need to be addressed for future growth. We have some different areas on Hanley and Southeast Way that we just need to be considering as we continue to grow in the region. Um, and we see um additional con- congestion um in this area. Um, I think just another thing to point out, um our model is a regional model, and so this development isn't, um, the traffic isn't um just specifically located to this area. So you have a lot of trips um coming through this area to get from Post Falls to Coeur d'Alene and vice versa, or north-south. Um, some of these trips generated by this development won't necessarily end up in Coeur d'Alene, but may end up in Post Falls or Hayden. Um, and so that's why um the city wanted to use the regional model for this level, high level of um just review to kind of see what is going on um based on everything that is um expected um in the future. Um, so that is all I have. I hope that gave you guys some clarification, but if you have any questions, I am open to answer those.
Questions?
I have a question. Um, and maybe you could pull up your traffic map, I know it was a little hard to see. We had a, a lot of comments um on the neighbors of Indian Meadows about using Arrowhead, and I have, and I know all this is kind of conceptual at this point, but it looks like the school is going to be on where Arrowhead would connect into the neighborhood instead of Nez Pierce. But on your maps, all the traffic is routed through Nez Pierce and there's not a connection into the neighborhood there. And so I'm wondering, you know, I guess, I guess they seem to differ there on that either being a through street or, because if that is the quickest route to the school, that will be the route that people will take, you know? So I guess it seems like that um is a mismatch, I guess.
Yeah, so with this high level an, of analysis, as I mentioned, we don't include all of the local roadway network. Um, so that does kind of make it difficult. And I know in the staff report, as it was mentioned before, um, you know, I know Chris noted that as this development progresses and it, as each stage bec- comes before you guys, additional traffic analysis will be done at a more tuned-in level. Um, we do have some connectors, um which is where um traffic enters and exits the TASZ. Um, and if you um look, I, more specifically, um it's not really shown well on this as well. Once you get into the volume, the traffic volume results, you can see that there is a shift, um, you know, a decrease or an increase of volumes at that location where Appaloosa meets Atlas Road. Um, and in some of our other analysis results, and I didn't include this here, you can kind of see the volumes shift between um where we have connectors along Atlas. So we don't have the roadways themselves, but we have connectors kind of stand-in for those local roadways. Um, there will be additional traffic on those roadways if they have those connections. Um, at this point, I can't just, it's hard to say, since everything again is conceptual, it's hard to specifically say what that impact will look like, but I know that's something that the city would continue to look into as that it, as this goes forward, um to do a more um narrow look at what the, the traffic impacts will be based on the land uses.
Go ahead, John.
A couple of quick questions if I could, thank you. Good presentation.
Thank you.
That was helpful for all of us, I think. Uh, going, again, some of the letters we get in advance and whatnot. One came from the city of Hayden, a little concern, uh, making sure that we preserve the footprint of the potential Hutter bypass. Can we put to rest, I guess, that the proposal does or doesn't uh threaten, if you will, or jeopardize the uh potential Hutter bypass?
So, since, again, this is conceptual. Um, I can't say for certain how it will impact the potential Hutter bypass. Um, I know that the Hutter bypass is still under study, it's now an ITD project, um, and they're currently going through the environmental review for that corridor. Um, so they're looking at the work that has been done, they're also kind of considering how Highway fifty-three can be incorporated, and so I know that there's still some work being done. Um, I know KMPO, I was not part of those conversations, but I know in the past that we had had some discussions with the applicant as well, as far as um setting aside the footprint um for the Hutter pi- Hutter bypass. And at that time, um, from what I recall, that that was um something that they were willing to work on. Um, the main um area, I think, based on the current footprint of the Hutter bypass that may be um, and maybe kind of an issue, I guess, would be just within the vicinity of Pole Line and Hanley, because that would be where um the first interchange would be located. Um, so I don't think I, I can put to rest whether it will impact. I know that our conversations with the applicant in the past is that they would be willing to work around that. Um, but I think that there's still some work to be done on how that will all specifically be laid out.
Fair enough, thank you. Uh, last thing, I wanted to touch on the, you know, the city has in their staff report from the Street and Engineering Department as a proposal to go into, uh, say, the draft uh annexation agreement, you know, the stipulation that the five road connections, you know, we've talked about the five road connections, and we're going to probably hear some more about that. But your modeling that you shared with us here assumed those five road connections, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. No more questions, appreciate it, Ally, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I don't have the sign-up sheet. We'll bring up the applicant, whoever, I understand there's a number of people from the, or the applicant themselves, I'm not, not sure who wants to speak first, but.
And Mr. Chairman, while the applicant team is um queuing up the sheet number two, there's a, a big number two circle on the top, I believe that's the applicant team on that sheet.
Okay, all the As.
And there's an A, yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure what order they're all in.
Just tell me, okay. Just let me know who yours, I can check you off.
Sure. Um, I'm Brad Marshall, I'm the Senior Project Manager Planner with JEB Engineers, representing the Cootney County Land Company.
Okay, um, let me just swear you in, so um my little swear and cheat here, sorry. Um, you solemnly swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
Okay, go right ahead, thank you. That's the last time I'll do that tonight, by the way.
We have about a thirty-minute presentation, multiple speakers, and a short five-minute video, and uh, because we've got a lot of information to share and get to the right questions. We previously-
And, and before, sorry to interrupt again, I just want to mention, we're going to take a break at five, five-thirty-ish, so just to let everyone know, at that point, somewhere around five-ish, we'll be taking a break. But go right ahead, sorry.
It'd be perfect. We previously requested approval for that thirty minutes, so I think we're on, on schedule. Um, first and foremost, I want to thank the commission for your volunteer time tonight, plus the staff for their time, their meetings, their reviews, and the well-written staff report, and Sean's excellent presentation, as well as Ally being here in her presentation as well. You know, on a personal note, I've been a planner in this area for more than thirty years. I've seen a lot of changes in our city over the years. I can remember when downtown was struggling, and today it looks great. It's vibrant and it's full of energy. I can also remember when Ramsey Road was a two-lane country road, and I can remember when Coeur d'Alene Place was a vacant field to the west of Ramsey Road. Today, it's a well-planned, master-planned community that's still developing, still providing housing opportunities for our citizens. Corteur project is envisioned to be very close and similar to the Coeur d'Alene Place project. A phased master-planned project developed over twenty to thirty years to meet the needs of our community, and tonight we're starting with annexation to the city. Opening comments. You know, with me tonight, as I mentioned, are several speakers. Uh, our first speaker after me is Melissa Wells, she's a partner with Lakeside Companies and the president of the Cootney County Land Company. Melissa's going to cover the Lakeside Companies and their vision for Corteur, and then we'll play a short video of this part that's on the Cootney County Land Company's website, which explains the project. Also with me tonight is Connie Krueger. Connie's an AICP Principal Planner with Stonehenge. She's a former Community Development Director and will cover studies, plans, public involvement, housing, comp plan, proposed annexation, and zoning. Also with me tonight is Gabe Gallinger. Gabe is a civil engineer, uh, he's a former city engineer, and he's going to cover parks, streets, excuse me, parks, streets, trails, water, and wastewater. Also available to speak, if needed, is Sean Mesner. Sean's a civil engineer with CivTech who completed the traffic study and worked with KMPO on that study. Sean is one of the top traffic engineers in the region. Also with me is Michelle Foljam. Michelle's our attorney, who's assisting us on applicable laws, the annexation and development agreements. Michelle is a former Cootney County attorney who advised the county commissioners and the planning and zoning commission on land use matters. At the tail end of our presentation, I'll end up some closing comments. I'll assist with kind of Q and A coordination, bringing up the right person for the questions that you may have, bring up, um, and kind of move into a, a closing comments. With that, I'd like to introduce Melissa Wells, President of the Cootney County Land Company.
Thank you, Brad, and thank you, Commissioners, and thank you to all of you for joining us here this afternoon. Again, my name is Melissa Wells, I'm the President of Cootney County Land Company and a partner in Lakeside Companies, which is our parent company. Um, to start out tonight, I just want to mention that we are a local company. My husband and I have lived here in Cootney County for over eighteen years and raised our two children here. Um, if you look across our entire organization, the vast majority live here in Cootney County and the Spokane areas. Our leadership team and ownership teams are also local. We're comprised of nineteen partners or associate partners, and all but three of them live here locally. Some of the companies in our organization that you may have heard of are Arcaterra Homes, Markham Builders, ATC Manufacturing, and Century Farms. We really pride ourselves on not only keeping business local, but also in constantly reinvesting back in our community. Um, just as an example, in our home building and land development entities alone, we work with over a hundred local subcontractors, suppliers, or consultants. This year alone, just year-to-date, we've already spent over fifty-two million dollars locally with these groups. We have many active communities underway in our region, so for example, in Coeur d'Alene, you're probably familiar with the Trails community, it's just north of our, north of the annexation area. And um I just wanted to point out, as we develop our communities, we're very, very focused on collecting input proactively from the community and then taking that feedback and incorporating it into our designs. We are very, very mindful of the local worker housing challenges that we have in our region, and we're working very hard on creating communities with housing types that help address these needs. We have been working on this project for over a decade, and uh this project started back with many, many conversations with the prior land owner, uh Roy Armstrong, and we truly feel that the reason that we were selected as the purchaser of this land was due to our shared vision that we had for this master plan. As a complement to the detailed application that we've already submitted, we would like to show you a five-minute video that we created, just explaining the project and the request.
Cootney County Land Company is a local company whose mission is to invest in the inland northwest by providing creative solutions to meet the needs of local communities. Cootney County Land Company is a subsidiary of Lakeside Companies who owns and operates various companies within the Coeur d'Alene and Spokane area. You may be familiar with Arcaterra Homes, ATC Manufacturing, Markham Builders, and Century Farms, or you may have seen some of their philanthropic work in the area. All of Cootney County Land Company's employees live, work, and play in the Coeur d'Alene, Spokane area, and have a genuine interest in helping to create a healthy, happy future for the region. Cootney County Land Company is excited to present its plans for a proposed master plan development called Corteur. The project vision is to provide a wide range of housing types to meet community needs while incorporating mixed-use areas for local businesses, community amenities, and school sites. Master planning is the process of organizing land uses, such as homes, parks, commercial areas, and open space. Master plans consider how to meet current community needs as well as future needs. They include extensive analysis and coordination with area agencies to ensure that designs are not haphazardly developed. Thoughtful master plans take time, and planning efforts for Corteur have been in the works for over a decade. The proposed master plan for Corteur incorporates feedback from thirteen agencies, twenty-six departments, and over forty agency staff members, as well as community feedback from stakeholder interviews, public surveying, and a public open house. Based on this feedback, several key goals were used to plan Corteur. They include walkability, access and safety for pedestrians, livability, access to cultural and recreational opportunities, variety of housing types and price points. and recreational opportunities, variety of housing types and price points, convenience of location, between Post Falls and Corlaine, providing valuable infill development, and integrated infrastructure to meet area capacity needs now and in the future. The project site is located within the city of Corlaine's area of city impact. This is a boundary that the city's comprehensive plan has identified as suitable for growth. The current ACI has been in place since the early 90s, and was designated as such to plan not only for outward growth, but also for infill development, to help connect services between neighborhoods. By carefully considering the city of Corlaine's past and current comprehensive plan, the project team identified zoning, which would be compatible with the current development and infrastructure that surrounds the site. With that blueprint as a guide, design of the concept master plan was a many-year effort, and the proposed design was finally released in late 2021. The design incorporates designation of two new school sites, a variety of housing types to meet the varied needs of residents, an extensive system of trails and pathways, parks and open space, including over 18 acres of city, community, and neighborhood parks, a green belt with water features running through the center of the design, and mixed-use zones, which combine housing and commercial uses, providing spaces for local restaurants, businesses, and shops, creating that Main Street USA feeling. At this point in the project, Cootney County Land Company has submitted an annexation and zoning application to the city of Corlaine. If approved, further studies will be conducted to refine and finalize preliminary designs, after which, Cootney County Land Company can decide to submit preliminary subdivision applications for the portions of the property that are ready to be developed. It's important to note that just as master plans take a long time to prepare, they also take a long time to develop. The Cortair master plan is being proposed with a phased build-out, which could take over 20 to 30 years to complete. The plans can be reassessed and further refined to meet the community's interests as needs and preferences change. Thank you for watching this video. For more information, continue to visit our website.
Again, that video is posted to the Cootney County Land Company's website under Cortair, and I encourage anybody, everybody, to take a quick look at that. Sean's done an excellent job in the staff report and illustrating the requested zoning. I take two seconds to touch on it, just brief. Again, we're seeking annexation and zoning today, and you're charged with a recommendation to move forward to the City Council. We're requesting a large, significant portion of the property is R8 for single-family homes, which is adjacent to the existing neighborhoods, some R17, which is a little denser housing for multifamily townhomes and that type of housing product, a small C17L zone for the wellsite we plan to dedicate for the city, and a C17 zone, which is about 51 acres total, and these are mixed-use zones, primarily, the best comparison might be, you might see in the Riverstone area, where you see first floor retail and commercial opportunities with second and third floor residential. So, I think it's important to point out that while we're seeking those zones and those density provisions, realistically due to the streets, the parks, the schools, the open space, and the setback requirements, we will not develop to the density provisions of the zoning code. You just can't kind of get there. Also, it's important to point out that, you know, we're certainly involved in the comprehensive plan process, the requested zoning matches up very nicely, almost perfectly with the underlying comprehensive plan designations, so we think that's appropriate. I think it's also important to point out that we are not seeking subdivision or planning and development approval tonight. Those will be coming over the course of 20 to 30 years, and by code, by statute, each and every one of those subdivisions will come before this commission for a review, and there'll be additional traffic analysis and wastewater and water as part of each of those projects. So there'll be multiple reviews and opportunities to comment on this. Again, this is a master planned community. The project includes a variety of homes, home types, parks, schools, commercial areas, and open space. Master plans consider how to meet current community's needs, as well as future needs. As part of our request, we've sought out public and community input, as part of, we've completed the stakeholder interviews, we notified surrounding property owners with mailers, we put ads in the paper, we put it up on reader boards, and we put on a voluntary open house at the CROG Center, which was well-received and well-attended. We've done our best to address impacts, we have completed traffic and wastewater and economic impact studies on the master plan, plus we met with fire and police departments, schools, hospitals, both, to discuss the project, discuss phasing the project, their needs and the impacts. We'll be improving adjacent streets, again, water and sewer systems, providing school sites, and hopefully a medical clinic site within the project. Again, as Sean mentioned in the staff report and the application, this site is in the area of city impact. Someone, some call it a growth management area, but it's been in the area of city impact for nearly 30 years. It's been on the boundary of Hutter Road. It's planned for at least 30 years, it's also been planned in the past comprehensive plan, and the most current, in your award-winning comprehensive plan that was recently adopted. We have an opportunity to review the staff report, it's very well-written, we agree to the condition of approval, a few minor edits that we can work through in the annexation and development agreement, but again, I think it's important to understand, we've read the staff report, we agree with the staff report, we'll work toward that annexation Next slide, economic benefits. The project will provide housing for current and future residents and employees, much-needed housing. These are our nurses, our teachers, our policemen, our firemen, business and industry employees that we need for a strong economy. It'll start out with skilled and professional jobs, employ craftsmen, framers, electricians, plumbers, carpenters, suppliers, and professional jobs during phases of construction, then more professional jobs and service jobs in the schools and the commercial mixed-use areas after development. We're estimating about 900 new jobs we've developed through this project. Again, we touched on it before, we plan to provide two new school sites, one in elementary school site, one in middle, excuse me, one in middle school site and one in elementary school site. The middle school site is needed regardless of this project, and we're working with the Corlaine School District today to bring on that school as fast as possible. The elementary will come on time and is needed for this project, so we're working with that school district on that. They've been great partners. Sales and property tax revenue. The project will generate sales tax revenue for the city during construction of phases due to material sales, and property tax revenue post-buildout, and more sales tax revenue, again, from the commercial areas in the project. We're estimating about $4.5 million worth of property and sales tax revenue will be generated from this project. Again, that goes for the maintenance of the services throughout the city. Expanded services, you know, again, I've been here a long time, and I can remember when there wasn't much in the city, other than a beautiful place to live, but with growth comes the expansion of services based on population growth. We will see expanded healthcare, specialty services, more police, fire, better equipment as population and revenue increases. Plus, quite frankly, on a fun note, more restaurant choices, more entertainment choices, and more shopping choices. Investment, and Melissa touched on it in the past, that Lakeside and Arquitera Homes have made substantial investments into the inland northwest, into Corlaine, into this region. This project will invest over $2.5 billion into our community over the course of a 23-year build-out. A $2.5 billion investment into our community. Again, I've touched on it before, but it's worthy of, again, again, the site's in the area of city impact for nearly 30 years. It's bordered by the city limits to the north, the east, and to the south. It has roads extending into the property, there's a city water tank on the property, there's a 24-inch water main on the property, city, and sewers extended into the property or near the property as well. It abuts several residential subdivisions that are R1, single-family, and we're proposing R1, single-family adjacent to those projects as well. Today, there are seven stub streets that access the property, again, a city water tank and a city water main property. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Principal Planner Connie, who's gonna address studies, plans, public involvement, housing, comp plan, annexation, and zoning. Connie's got a lot to do.
So, for those of you that are not familiar with this map, and this map actually is taken from the county GIS, and it shows the cities on the Rathrum Prairie and where the four ACIs of the city, or three in this case, because Rathrum's a little bit further away. It actually shows where Hayden is in red, and in yellow is Corlaine, and green is Post Falls. And so the areas that are bright are the areas that are already incorporated, and then the areas that are faded out are the areas of city impact, where the cities have been planning to grow. We think that's an important thing to note, it's been brought up a couple of times tonight, but this is an area that in the early 90s was a subject of planning for these cities, for Hayden, Post Falls, Corlaine, Rathrum was also a party to this, Hauser, and Cootney County, and they all engaged in a multi-year planning process pursuant to the requirements of Idaho Code 676526. And this requires cities and counties to create areas of city impact where growth and annexation are intended to occur. So the cities and counties mapped these areas of city impact that you see here, and they entered into mutual agreements as to how growth and development would occur in this infill area. Ever since this multi-jurisdictional planning process, this property has been planned for future annexation by the city of Corlaine, and this is recognized by the surrounding cities, as well as by Cootney County, and it's reflected in the comprehensive plans of all of them. This property has also been in the, has also been in the city of Corlaine's prior comprehensive plans, and in the recent plan update, and has also been planned for future growth in the city's parks, wastewater, water, and trail and bikeways master plans, so all of the infrastructure plans of the cities. This area has also been planned for in the KMPO Critical Arterial Corridor Study, Regional Non-Motorized Transportation Plan, and the Hutter Bypass Project. And this was also part of a multi-jurisdictional agency plan for searing the cities as they grew into their designated ACIs, and we don't hear much about that plan anymore, because everyone has their own respective sewer plans, but there was a plan for how we would grow and where these ACI boundaries would be relative to that. As has been mentioned by Melissa, the owner's planning for this area began about 10 years ago, with ongoing discussions with a prior owner, Mr. Roy Armstrong. A skilled planning firm developed a master plan, which was discussed with Mr. Armstrong, and then this plan was updated in 2018, near the time of purchase of the property. Cootney County Land Company then engaged in proactive wastewater and transportation studies using this plan as the vision to guide the sizing and location of such systems, with the understanding that with time, over 20 to 30 years of build-out, plans will be tailored to individual development proposals. These studies helped to provide a predictable baseline of information for the city to utilize in considering this annexation request. So this is the information that has been provided to the Parks Department, the Water Department, the Wastewater Department, for everyone to evaluate and to get a baseline understanding of what we think the impacts will be. And as we grow over time, we'll do analysis related to that, but again, establishing some expectations and understanding of what this means to annex. In 2019, a third round of planning began. Cootney County Land Company engaged a real estate analytics firm who worked both pre- and post-COVID, to ensure the project was planned with housing and commercial uses that are realistic for the greater Corlaine area, and which recognized changing needs, such as a smaller retail brick-and-mortar base with our increases in online retail, mixing uses within buildings, providing for live-workout housing, changing maintenance desires and the like. During this round of planning, Cootney County Land Company approached the Corlaine City Council, requesting specific planning for this area with the city's recent comprehensive plan update process, and the City Council did authorize this. During the update process, the Cootney County Land Company conferred with the city's staff and the city's comprehensive planning and traffic planning consultants on an ongoing basis, and this planning is included in the city's newly updated comprehensive plan. And here we see the reflection of a variety of place types, and the specific types are the single-family neighborhood place type, which here, we've implemented with the R8 zoning. And if you look at the comprehensive plan land use map, it actually showed more of a compact neighborhood type, and we kind of have brought in more of this R8, which is a little larger lots, to better buffer the development to the east and to the south of us. So we have the single-family neighborhood place type, which we realized with the R8 zoning, the compact neighborhood place type, which is implemented with the R17, the urban neighborhood place type, which is also implemented with R17, and then the mixed-use low place type, which is shown here with the C17. And this is the area that was discussed that would look a little bit, you know, kind of like Riverstone, two, three-story commercial, maybe some living units up above. Overall, as envisioned in this and in the prior comprehensive plan for the city, this project is primarily a residential development, and this has similar lot sizes, structures, and densities, exists as exist in Corlaine's urbanized area, and develops that you know as Corlaine Place and the Trails, and there may be others, but those are just ones that are kind of within the vicinity that we think are similar. And this has some similar, this has some higher density housing and commercial uses, and these are primarily located in the north and southwest portions of the site. These zone districts are located there based on their proximity to Hutter, either as an improved arterial road, or as the Hutter bypass, as well as other major infrastructure planned schools and park sites. The city, and I mentioned the compact neighborhood type that was called for, you know, kind of down here, more in this area, and we did, you know, we have extended a little bit more of that R8 place type there. And this was based on feedback that we've received from our public outreach process. Over approximately four years, during the second and third round of planning, the Cootney County Land Company met with a multitude of agencies, divisions, and staff members, and details of this are provided in the narrative. A wide variety of input was received, which is reflected in our plan. An example is feedback received from Corlaine Police and Fire, related to desired land uses near schools, and designing collector and arterial streets for safety considerations that they encounter. Another example is discussion of opportunity sites with healthcare and emergency responders if the need is determined at a future point in time. In 2020, the Cootney County Land Company began a public outreach process engaging in two rounds of community stakeholder interviews, and organized a public open house to provide information obtained feedback on the project, and you saw some of the photos from that in our video. The open house was held May 4th, 2022, at the CROG Center, and was attended by approximately 65 people, many of whom lived in the surrounding neighborhoods. And these are some of the discussion themes that we saw. So you see the amenities that are commonly supported and the areas of priority concern. There were two additional focus areas that arose during this planning process. With the rising demand on housing, as well as staffing shortages faced by local businesses, there was significant discussion in agency and stakeholder meetings about the lack of housing supply and the need to provide for local worker housing, primarily in medical, education, and public safety occupations. Given this, with this annexation application, we are working with Panhandle Area Housing Alliance, and are dedicating 5% of the housing in this project to worker housing. This will be in the form of memorandum of understanding, which will be incorporated into the annexation agreement provided to the City Council. And Maggie Lyons is also here, and will speak during public comment as to that. The second focus area was the need for school sites, both to address needs for existing school population, as well as for future students. The school district has located sites within the property that are desirable to them, so the locations that we show are areas that they felt were desirable based on a variety of needs that the district has. As such, we have entered into an MOU with the Corlaine School District for citing of these elementary and middle schools. As has been mentioned, thoughtful master plans take time. There are nearly 30 years of multi-agency planning for this area, followed by 10 years of Cootney County Land Company planning. of Cootney County Land Company, company planning, with concerted attention to existing plans and regional needs as well as focused agency discussions. The zoning that we proposed is consistent with and implements the long-range plans of our regional agencies and the city's comprehensive plan and the long-range vision for the city. I'm now handing the presentation to Gabe, who will discuss parks and trails, transportation, water, and wastewater.
Gabe, parks and trails.
Thank you, Connie. Again, my name's Gabe Gallinger. I'm a civil engineer for Cootney County Land Company. We're going to start tonight by talking about parks and trails, and these are some of the presentation boards that we had present at our public open house that we, um, we had in May at the Croc Center. So at those meetings and the inclusion of parks and open space into this master plan was one of the primary takeaways from our public, public outreach and stakeholder meetings that we've conducted. Our team has also met with the city Parks Department multiple times to coordinate the size and location of the proposed public parks, um, to ensure consistency with the adopted park master plan. As a result of those meetings, we've included a 5.4 acre park in the north half of the project. We've also included a 12.3 acre community park in the southern half of the project, for a total of nearly 18 acres of public park area. In addition to the public park areas, uh, we propose to dedicate a significant amount of open space that will be owned and maintained by the HOA. This includes a central corridor running down the middle of the site that will, that will provide a meandering pathway that connects the proposed school sites and the two proposed public park areas with, um, an off-street parking corridor, providing great circulation through the middle of the project. And then in addition to that, smaller private pocket parks will be provided throughout the neighborhood, promoting high utilization due to the convenience and proximity to the homes and neighborhoods. We envision these parks to be designed and constructed to provide a wide variety of both active and passive amenities tailored to the individual needs of the various neighborhoods. From our extensive research, master plan communities across the country, we've discovered that trails are the number one desired amenity. Trails have been a cornerstone of our planning efforts since the beginning of this project, and, and I believe they're reflected in the master plan that we have included with the In this area, we're very fortunate to have extensive regional trail systems in the vicinity with the Prairie Trail to the north, Centennial Trail to the south, and we want this project to not only provide connections for those existing trails, but to enhance the local trail network. So we're proposing over four miles of new trails, most of which will be installed in common area landscape tracks located around the perimeter of the project, north-south through the center, and also east-west through several planned landscape corridors. So in all, the proposed parks, open space, and trail systems are consistent with or exceed the requirements of the city parks master plan. So access to the proposed annexation, annexation area is provided by two existing arterial streets, Hutter Road on the west, Hanley Avenue on the north. In addition, three existing local stub streets to the east and one stub street to the south as required and coordinated by this, with the city. Our team has met with both the fire and police departments to discuss the new streets and the development. This coordination has resulted in plan modifications such as reducing long straight corridors to discourage speeding while providing intersection spacing and sizing to accommodate large emergency vehicles. Ultimately, the master plan provides a new north-north-south collector that connects to Hanley, a new east-west collector that connects out to Hutter, and local streets that connect to both of those arterials. The new roads in this area will aid in the connectivity of traffic, so traffic can spread out and not be confined to the limited number of existing routes available today. The new roadway system also provides enhanced emergency access for the new neighborhood and also existing neighborhoods, providing, again, new routes and ways to get in and out of these areas for circulation. And the Cootney County, or the Cootney Metropolitan Planning Organization did perform the traffic modeling for this project to gauge the local and regional impacts of our master plan for future years, 2035 and 24, 45. And I want to thank Ally for coming up and providing the details of that model and discussing how it's, um, been put together and, and how it moves through time and, and tracks not just local, specific streets around the development, but also regional traffic movements. And I think a few of the takeaways from that presentation, but that the model outputs did include scenarios, both with and without the project and with and without the Hutter bypass. So those analysis results have allowed us to verify that our proposed master plan works regardless of the outcome of the bypass. And, and those results are also consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, traffic analysis, and KMPO's transportation plan. So a very important consideration in any annexation is the analysis to determine if the site can be adequately served by public utilities. This site not only has existing water on three sides, the north, the south, and the east, also has existing city water improvements within the project boundary. As you've heard a little bit before, we have an existing water tank in the northeast corner of the property. We also have a 24-inch transmission main that runs from the water tank south to Nez Pierce along the eastern property line. And we've met with Coeur d'Alene Water Department on several occasions to discuss this potential annexation and have agreed to dedicate the existing tank site and an additional site for a new public well on the property to facilitate this annexation. And as, as you've seen in the staff report, the Water Department stated, "The public water system has the capacity and the willingness to serve the plan development." Sewer. Similar to water, sewer is an important component of an annexation analysis. As such, we've hired JUB engineers to conduct a comprehensive wastewater analysis for the collection and transport of sewer from the proposed master plan area through the existing system to the treatment plant. Based on the results of this study, we are proposing to connect into the existing system in three locations, one on the north, one on the east, and one in the southeast corner. From these three locations, we'll be able to extend pipes and serve the entire development with gravity sewer mains. That means no new lift stations are needed or proposed for this project. And, and the study did also identify five potential projects that Sean had covered in, in the, uh, his presentation that are necessary to increase the existing system capacity to accommodate the ultimate build-out of this project, and the details of those projects and the timing, improvements, and connections will be coordinated with the wastewater department and included in the development agreement. And again, in the staff report, the wastewater department stated, "The city's wastewater utility presently has the wastewater system capacity and willingness, willingness to serve this annexation request as proposed." So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Brad Marshall for the conclusion of our, our proposal.
Thanks, Gabe. Excellent job. Standards of approval. You know, Idaho Code speaks of annexations and provides some guidance, and the staff report does an excellent job, and Sean did a good job tonight, kind of speaking of the guidance and the criteria for annexation approval. Before you, that's kind of a summary of Idaho Code, and I'm not going to read it verbatim, but that's the kind of gist of it. But it's just a general reminder, um, as we think of Idaho Code, the standards, the sites in the ACI, the area-city impact for nearly 30 years, it's planned for in your comprehensive plan, the past, and the current. It's planned for in your parks plan, your water plan, a recent wastewater plan, the KMPO regional model, the Hutter Road transportation studies that address this project. There are existing streets, sewer and water to the site and/or on the site. As the project has developed over time, there'll be new streets and water and sewer systems that will be funded by the developer and then maintained by property and sales tax revenue over time. The site is level environmentally, it's conducive to development. And the city has, through its city staff, based on those plans, has said there's a capacity to serve and a willingness to serve. So the bottom line is the city in the past has done an excellent job of addressing this property in those required master planning documents. They've done a great job. Just a few closing comments, and, and maybe we'll move to break. Again, we're seeking annexation and zoning approval. We're not seeking subdivision approval. Those will come over the years to come, and there'll be multiple public hearings, additional traffic studies, updates to water and wastewater studies. We've submitted a very detailed and strong application. We've completed stakeholder interviews. We put on a voluntary open house. We agree with the staff report and the conditions of approval. The proposed zoning conforms to your comprehensive plan and is compatible with the adjacent land use and zoning as illustrated not only in our application documents as well as the staff report and the presentation. Again, the sites were in the ACI and KMPO plans. The city staff has indicated they have a capacity and willingness to serve. I want to address one of the comments by the, one of the commission members about the annexation agreement that's forthcoming. You know, that agreement is binding, and attached to that will be an exhibit map that illustrates the zoning that we've requested and legal descriptions for each of those zoning boundaries. So as development applications come before you, subdivision or PUD, you'll be able to kind of say, hey, this subdivision you're proposing is with this, this zone, you meet these zoning standards to these subdivision standards, um, that project well may likely move forward. But if it doesn't meet those zoning or subdivision standards, or we need an update to a traffic study or sewer-water study to address, you know, and address some impacts, we will, we'll do so. So there's, there's a lot of protection measures for the city as, as time goes on. Additional comments, as Gabe mentioned, the site's proposing 18 acres of city parks, four miles of new trails. The start of a master plan preview that provides a variety of housing types and services that meets the needs of our community. We're working with the Panhandle Area Housing Alliance, it's called acronym PAHA, and we're agreeing to dedicate 5% of the housing areas to professional workforce housing, you know, and they'll speak to that later. Again, Cortair is a long-term phased master plan project to develop for 20 to 30 years. We have support letters from the Coeur d'Alene, the Post Falls, and even the Rathrum Chamber Commerce, Jobs Plus, the Economic Development Corporation, Northwest Specialty Hospital, PAHA, business owners, individuals focused, primarily focused on the need for housing for our employees. And again, these are our teachers, our nurses, our police, our fire, and our construction workers, a variety of needs. We have a housing shortage in our community, good or bad. With that, behalf of the Cootney County Land Company, Lakeside Development, I respectfully request a unanimous recommendation of approval to be forwarded on to the city council. Thank you.
You got some questions? The applicant? I've got a quick question.
Mr. Chairman.
Regarding the percentage, 5% of workforce housing, is that going, and I know this is a 20-year plan, you know, the 5%, is that a portion, single-family duplexes, or whatever this product is going to be, that 5%, is it going to be a certain product, or is it just at a time of development, this will be 2% of that or 1% of that? How, what's the vision of the developer on?
If that's okay, I can address that question. I think there's two better people to address it.
Sure.
And one is Connie Kruger, our principal planner on the project, and we have another speaker from PAHA, Maggie Lyons, who's going to address that question, too.
Sure. Come on, back up.
So bring Connie up to address the housing question.
So in the application packet, we have a sheet called the work, the Local Worker Housing Toolkit, I believe. It's one of the addendums to your application packet. So there are a variety of different ways to address this requirement. So when we initially submitted the application to you, we submitted it taking the toolkit that had been developed by the Regional Housing and Growth Partnership and included that, saying these are some of the tools that we'll utilize. And since that time, we've been working with PAHA, and Maggie Ashley has been working on a variety of different tools that will help us to get to this goal. And one of the primary ones that I think she has been working on is deed restrictions. So as you work with these tools, there are sometimes issues with fair housing, federal laws related to these, and so she has been spending quite a number of weeks recently working with an attorney on some of, kind of perfecting some of these deed restrictions and can guide us a little bit more on what those look like. As to the actual housing types, we haven't yet determined what those housing types will be. What our plan is to do is to bring an MOU between us and PAHA and have that incorporated into the development agreement that goes through with the city council. So she's working on some of the tools, getting them updated, making them legally defensible, and then we'll work through the details, and that will be brought into the city council, into that development agreement.
Okay. Go right ahead, yeah.
So in terms of the toolkit and different models, what about timing? I know this is a long, multi-phase project, but there's some real urgency in the housing.
Yes.
Will that agreement reflect timelines so that we can alleviate some of that?
Yes.
Rather than later, so different models, different times, but it's not, we're not going to have to wait for years.
Yeah, we have talked about that, and Maggie has been a big advocate, of course, for us to build it all first, which isn't extremely realistic, but we definitely have talked about trying, that the, the need is now and trying to address that upfront in the process. And so we do anticipate that there will be timing provisions in that agreement.
Let me see. Oh, John, go ahead, sorry.
So I wonder if I could shift gears and ask a transportation question, or a question of Gabe?
Well, I've got another question on the, you know, on the housing thing, while you're up here.
All right.
Have you discussed like land trusts or anything like that, and some of the stuff that I heard from the housing group that's been working with the city for a long time, and also I was talking to Kiki Millow today a little bit about stuff. Land trusts and other options and just, all right, here's a percentage of a house that, or some product that someone has to buy at, I guess, at market rate? I'm not sure, 20 years from now, 10 years from now, whenever this gets developed, as you pointed out. So is the discussion on that, land trust type of things?
We, we have talked about land trusts, and we have been, um, we've looked a little bit, there's a model up in Sandpoint, there are some others that are out there that we've looked at. At this point in time, we haven't committed to that. One of the things that we're, you know, we're focused on is we really feel like there's, we want to really know what the look and the feel of the community is, and so there's a real desire by the owner to develop it himself and not, not to have elements of it being sold off to land trust. But we haven't precluded that either because it is a great tool. And so that's why, you know, in our application, we've kept it open, and as we work to finalize some of the details, I think we'll be looking at more of the viability of that. The other thing with that is that, as we pointed out, housing needs will change over the 20 to 30-year build-out of this project. And with that, the owner's needs and desires change, there are just practicalities of implementation, things like that, that also could change. And so I think we want to keep it open and keep it flexible, yet at the same time make sure that we follow through on our commitment to provide that. So we'll work through the details of that, but I think we'll also want an agreement that will allow us to contemplate some of those options in the future. An example that I've run into is a former community development director, is that sometimes the agency or organization that you're working with to provide that housing, it may not exist 10 years. exist 10 years from now. And so then everyone's kind of left with, oh, you know, how do we implement this? So getting about, you know, kind of phasing in early, that helps with that, but also having flexibility in what the tools will be, will be there. And it may be that we have an agreement, and then we modify at a later point in time if the need arises. But our commitment is there to the housing. And Maggie, when she talks to you, will explain kind of the more of the mechanics of what that will look like in terms of price ranges, and that will give an idea of the types of housing that it could possibly address.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Have you done any Title VIII housing, anything in that category? Have you had any of that in your history at all?
We have not. We have talked a little more recently to people about that with other developments, but we haven't done it with...
We have, again, a vacuum, a huge vacuum. People wait for two, three years to get Title VIII, and they're desperately in need of it.
I don't know if you can answer this, or maybe Brad, but the timeline, I know it's in 20-20 years, but what's your projection of, if this goes forward and gets approved and stuff, what's your anticipated infrastructure timeline and that, that even a single home might be available to workforce or whatever? Give us a little insight on that.
Gabe would probably be better to speak to you on timeline, and he has very real experience with other projects that are happening in the area that he can...
Sure.
He probably would not want me to commit him to now, but I'll have him do that.
Yeah, I can address that. So if this project were to go forward on schedule, if we get a recommendation of approval, go to council meeting, get approved, then we have to come back and figure out, okay, which portion of the project do we want to come back with subdivision or PUD or start? And at this point, our anticipation has been really the north portion of the project, probably the north 160 acres is what we've identified as most likely the first PUD or phase to come back for subdivision approval. That process is going to take some months to get application materials, studies, details, agreements ready. Anticipate really 2023 as being that year. Assuming approvals come forward on that, we have to do construction plans, detailed development plans, submit, get project approvals, so that'll be the beginning of 2024. So we break ground probably beginning mid-2024 as a best-case scenario, the way I see it realistically. Build first-phase infrastructure that year, and then start foundations either very, very late 2024 or early 2025, with home completions probably by the end of that year. So I think realistically, the best-case scenario for affordable housing and these housing types available to move in would be into 2025.
Okay, go ahead. Appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
More questions?
I had a question of you, Gabe.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, you know, there's, again, a lot of letters and comments and emails and stuff, you know, significant, you know, thoughts about, you know, traffic. People want to understand that well, and I want to understand that myself well. And the city, I understand, is really kind of adamant about the five connections. And you and the city are in sync with the five connections, correct? And I just kind of really nailed down, I think in my mind, where they are. If you could pull up that map again, that'd be great for this question. So thank you. So one connector comes off of Hanley, one comes off of Hutter, two go to the east, and one to the south.
Yeah. So we have a local street connection on the south. We have local street connection shown currently at Arrowhead, at Nez Pierce, and at Laurel.
Okay. So the question I have is, that ties into the phasing, I think, well, and it starts to the north, and so maybe the first one of those connectors might come off of Hanley. I'm just curious, what, if you have the vision, if you've done the traffic analysis and whatnot, is that a roundabout at Hanley, a signal? And then when we eventually, years from now, work our way down to the Hutter connection, what does that look like? Is that a signal? And if so, who pays for it? And have you reached out to Post Falls Highway, who has cognizant jurisdiction of that road?
So that's a couple of questions. And realistically, there are a few factors in play. We currently are in development of the trail subdivision. The trail subdivision has a requirement today to connect Hanley from its current terminus at Carrington over to Hutter as soon as we cross south of the Prairie Trail. At this point, our intention is to do that next construction season with a phase of the trail subdivision. So Hanley will most likely get improved to the three-lane existing configuration as required in our conditions of approval for the trail subdivision next year. So it'll be in place, operable. We have met with Post Falls Highway District. We've agreed that there is probably going to be an intersection improvement required. One of our other requirements for the trail subdivision currently is to do a signet warrant analysis, which we're currently working on with our traffic engineer. And assuming that that warrant analysis does show that there is a need for a signal, then we're currently required to pay our proportionate share of that signal based on the traffic counts and modeling that are done for that.
Thank you.
One more.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, my back's...
Sorry. For the middle school in the north area, what, not to wiggle ourselves into the MOU between you and the school district, but how soon could the district? You mentioned mid-2025 realistically for housing, but when could the school district realistically build and open up that site?
So I may be guessing a little bit, because I know once the school district owns the property, they have to go out for a bond, get an approval vote through the bond to get funding for the school, then they begin design, which takes at least a year, if not more, and then into construction. So it's probably, best case, a similar timeline, if everything were to move forward very quickly.
Thank you.
I guess I have two questions. Hopefully, they're pretty quick. I guess this might be a fine map to use, but I've seen some versions of your plan, and I know we're not approving the entire plan, but I think it might be good for the audience to hear and stuff, that there was a green space buffer going along the, I guess, the east side?
Correct.
Of the neighborhoods there? Can you talk a little bit about that? Because there's some water and sewer in there, is that right?
There's not sewer currently, but there is a water line. So again, when we first looked at the site, it's obvious that there's a perimeter farming road that goes around the whole perimeter of the site. And you can go out there on any day and see multiple people walking around that road. They use it, again, for a trail amenity exercise, just getting out and walking around. So one of the first things that we did with the master plan, planning group that we hired, was said, you know, "We really want to preserve that perimeter trail. It gets high utilization today. It'll be even higher when our development's in place." But we didn't want to take away from the area and the community that people are currently using. So we have, it's a minimum of 20-foot-wide common area extending on the south, the east, and portions of the west, you know, the portions that we own and control, to keep that landscape strip available and do a paved, shared-use access trail on that.
And that will go all the way up to Hanley?
That will go all the way up to Hanley.
Okay.
Connect into the Prairie Trail, regional trail system.
I just wanted to highlight that, because I think I, that is a well-used, well-used trail right now.
And, you know, some of the use is welcome, and some of the motor vehicles aren't as currently welcome out there.
And then the other one, when you talk about fire, is this all going to be serviced by the fire station on Hanley and Atlas? Or will it be in need for another fire station?
So when we met with the fire department, they said that this project would not require the need of a new fire station, that it would be served by the existing fire station.
Okay, thanks.
Phil?
Yeah, when you were talking, I thought of something. You're doing the trails project, is that what I understood, and with that, you're doing Hanley?
Correct.
Then for this project, what your intent to be, if you know, begin your phasing at the north end? And then work south on the property?
So again, yes, the initial phase for subdivision, it'll come back to you and the commission, is planned at this point to be the north, probably 160 acres. That's based partially on the fact that we have sewer connection ability in the north central portion of that site. And that sewer has the ability to serve the north 160 acres by gravity. So that kind of helps define these boundary lines, and where are utilities, where can we hook in, how can we extend those, and where are the bounds? And then that helps us determine what makes sense as a proposal.
I understand that. One other thing, you are a development company, and I assume you have your own contractors, architectura, whatever they are. Would it be your intent to build the entire thing, or would you be selling off parcels, if you know at this point?
So at this point, the intent is to develop and build the entire project.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions of Gabe before bringing it back to... Do you want to conclude, or what do we? You have a couple of other, because we're about...
We'll try to direct you to the right person for the question, and/or I'll do my best to address the question.
Okay. No, I don't have any other questions. I didn't know if you were concluding your...
We are. Unless the commission has any more questions, we are wrapped up for time at this point.
I believe my sign-up sheet here, is there Sean Messner from Traffic going to speak? If he does, great. If not, and how about, is it Michelle, your attorney?
Good question. Sean Messner is our traffic engineer. He's available to speak.
Okay.
But I believe at this point, Gabe Gallinger, who's a civil engineer, did a pretty good job addressing the question. Michelle's our attorney. She's available to speak if needed to.
Okay, all right. So no other questions? All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's about almost 5:30. And I'll leave this up to the commissioners. I would like maybe input from the city departments at this time before we come back, or Hillary, or if you want to, we can take a break.
I think we should take the break, just since we noticed that we would be taking the break, and we're already delayed, so I think...
We'll take a break, and then I'll come back, and what I'd like to do is hear from the departments, and then I'll open up to the public.
Okay.
Great. How long?
30 minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm on Chris Bosley up there.